Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website, WCSOH.org. Click on the district link, then select Board of Education, then Board Doc's Agenda, and select this evening's meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.01. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 12.07. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 13.01. There is a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of this room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. And with that, Mr. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Cotter?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Byrd?
Will you stand and join us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Agenda Item 3. One of the most exciting things that I think we get to do as a Board of Education are district highlights and recognitions. For these district highlights and recognitions, I'm going to go to the podium to read through and to explain a little bit, and I'm going to ask the Board of Education, the Superintendent and the Treasurer, to join up front so we can greet those who will be recognized. So if you'll just give us a minute, we'll go take care of that. The first recognition we have is, I'm going to ask for Central Teacher Scott Painter to come forward to recognize state runner-up Poetry Out Loud. And Scott, if you would come forward and bring the honoree as well.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board, Dr. Kellogg. Noah Martin is currently a sophomore at Westerville Central. He participated in our annual now Poetry Out Loud contest, which is a national contest. Approximately 350,000 students are involved, and about 9,000 Ohio students. He made it to the semifinals where they asked 12 students to recite a total of three poems, and then he made it to the semifinals after that, or the semifinals, then the finals, where they had the six finalists from the state of Ohio, and Noah came in second. This is Noah Martin.
Hi, Noah Martin. Yeah. I've been asked if I would recite a poem, and before I do that, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone. All right. "Every Single Day," by John Straley, after Raymond Carver's Hummingbird. Suppose I said the word "springtime," and I wrote the words "king salmon" on a piece of paper and mailed it to you. When you opened it, would you remember that time we spent together in the yellow boat when the early whales were feeding and we caught our first fish of the year? Or would you remember that afternoon? Your father laughing, telling stories as he ran the boat? Then the tug and zing of that very first fish spooling off into the gray-green world? You laughing and brushing back your hair before setting the hook? I know I'm hard to understand sometimes, particularly when you're standing at the post office with only a piece of paper saying "king salmon" on it. But just think of it as a promissory note, and that electric tug, that thrill, pulling your mind into deep water, is how I feel about you every single day.
There is a resolution, Noah, that I'd like to read, and now that you have done such a superb job, I'm a little hesitant to do my part of the reading. But this is the resolution. And I don't know if Todd Spinner -- Todd, would you come forward, please? Todd Spinner is the principal at Central. You can applaud for him. This is a resolution, Noah, that this one will go to the schools, and then once you go forward to shake the hands of my esteemed colleagues there, there is a copy of this resolution for you as well. Resolution of Commendation for Westerville Central High School. Whereas at the urging of coaches Amy Ferris, Jim Granus, and Scott Painter, Westerville Central High School sophomore Noah Martin entered a national poetry recitation contest called Poetry Out Loud. And whereas at the state semifinals held on March 5, 2016, at the Ohio Historical Center, Martin recited "In Flanders Field" by John McCray in round one, and "Every Single Day," a John Straley poem, in round two. Whereas based on his outstanding performance, Martin was selected as one of 12 Central Ohio students to advance to the state finals. And whereas on Saturday, March 19, Noah Martin competed in the state Poetry Out Loud contest held at COSI, where once again he recited "In Flanders Field" and "Every Single Day." And whereas Martin was one of six pupils chosen to recite a third poem, and he selected "Grief" by Elizabeth Barrett Browning, which propelled him to a second-place finish in the state of Ohio Poetry Out Loud contest. Therefore be it resolved that the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and Superintendent commend Noah Martin, along with his coaches, for representing Westerville Central High School and the Westerville City School District with pride and distinction, and wish him success in all future endeavors, April 25, 2016. forward, please.
Wow. Not sure I want to follow Noah. Chemistry, that's wow. Well, my name is Jeff Bracken, and I'm a chemistry teacher and science department facilitator at Westerville North High School. Having been at North for quite some time, I'm truly honored to speak here tonight as part of this formal board recognition event. Sarah Crowsey was a student at Westerville North with a true passion for science, in particular, chemistry and geology. Her love of all things science was coupled with her love of playing the viola in our school's orchestra. Sarah championed the effort to establish a Science Olympiad team at Westerville North. She even spoke at a school board meeting as a ninth grader to advocate for the establishment of this team. Dr. Nestor Baker probably was there. Not many people could pull off something like that, especially in Westerville, where just because you want something doesn't mean you get something. The absolute unthinkable tragedy of Sarah's passing in September of 2004 left so many questions as to how this could happen to such a young, vibrant 16-year-old child. Words cannot describe the tremendous impact Sarah made on her school, her friends, her teachers, and without question, on her immediate family. Just today, I spoke with two of Sarah's former science teachers from when she was at North, chemistry teacher Denny Wegman and geology teacher John Burckheimer, and each commented to me today what a special student Sarah was. Her endless natural curiosity, frequent questions, and a genuine love of science that was evident to both of them on a daily basis. With hearts left to cherish Sarah's memory, her family and friends initially established the Sarah Crowsey Memorial Foundation to provide college scholarships to graduating seniors who were interested in pursuing scientific careers. A short time later, Sarah's foundation provided grants for Westerville science teachers. Not surprisingly, this fund provided generous financial support for Science Olympiad programs at the high school and middle school levels. Science Olympiad offered opportunities for students who shared Sarah's passion for scientific problem-solving. Other creative projects funded through this memorial foundation include the purchase of material science glass fabrication equipment, a large-scale organic compost tea brewer system, doors for liquid nitrogen where kids can experience the fun at 77 Kelvin -- that may not have a lot of meaning for some of you -- Sherlock Bones forensic kits, and a walking path at our school's land lab. All of these offer incredible learning experiences for hundreds of students each year. Each project started as just an idea in the mind of a teacher, and the Sarah Crowsey Memorial Foundation allowed each to come to fruition. Funding has also paid for the professional training of staff members for the new metal fabrication equipment in Westerville's Intro to Engineering program, where students will once again be challenged to blend their scientific skills and creativity to tackle real-world problems. One of the last projects funded was the purchase of a storage shed. You see the pictures there. To support Westerville North's outdoor gardening adventures. Sarah's shed, complete with a sign with a bunny, supports our 60 raised-bed gardens, over 20-some composting bins, and our multiple worm composting bins. With generous funding from Sarah's immediate family and friends, this shed features vinyl siding, a metal roof, and a maintenance-free floor. As you can see, flowers surround three sides of the building to accent its presence. This shed, and indeed Sarah's legacy, will continue for many years to come. I would ask that you please join me in expressing our sincere and perhaps overdue appreciation -- I'm going to say Mr. and Mrs. Crowsey, but I know they'd rather hear John and Betsy, their family and friends who are here tonight, for, in Betsy's words, finding good through a tragedy. May you always know of the positive impact you have made in the lives of Westerville students. Thank you.
There's a resolution I would like to read as well. Resolution of Commendation for John and Betsy Crowsey. Whereas Sarah Crowsey danced her way to Westerville North High School every day, barely able to contain her enthusiasm for learning everything she could. And whereas Sarah tragically and unexpectedly passed away on September 13, 2004, at the tender, young age of 16. And whereas Sarah's parents, John and Betsy Crowsey, turned their unimaginable grief into something positive by establishing the Sarah Crowsey Memorial Science Grant Program, capturing and celebrating Sarah's spirit and love of learning by offering amazing opportunities to students and educators who share her passion for scientific study. And whereas over the years, more than $30,000 from that fund has been given directly to students in the form of college and program scholarships for in-classroom enrichment activities, for equipment to enrich the science curricula, in support of the Science Olympiad and robotics teams, and for staff training in support of STEM education. Therefore be it resolved that the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and Superintendent deeply thank John and Betsy Crowsey for their remarkable generosity in fulfilling Sarah's dream of inspiring others to get excited about science. When people give out of a place of strength, it's a really good thing. When people give out of a place of brokenness, it's a beautiful thing. We are so thankful for who you are and for what you've done. Going back to the Poetry Out Loud state runner-up for Noah, there are a couple other teachers here, and we have a recognition certificate for them as well. So in addition to Scott, would Amy Ferris and Jim Granus, please, come forward? The next award that we would like to recognize, to share, is what we call the A-plus awards. And to intro that, to tell you a little bit about that, I'm going to ask Dr. Kellogg to just share, just briefly, the background on that.
Thank you, Mr. Velardo. Tonight, we honor eight individuals who will be the recipients of the Westerville City School District A-plus Employee Awards. These awards are presented to teachers and support staff who distinguish themselves through a single or ongoing demonstration of exemplary performance. Winners were selected by committee that included me, the Treasurer, two Board of Education members, and I believe that was Mr. Velardo and Mrs. Davidson, community members, parent representative, and the community engagement coordinator. That's Lynn over there with the camera. Tonight's recipients display exceptional performance in support of the district's mission, which is to prepare students to contribute to the competitive and changing world in which we live, and values of the district, which includes respect, inclusiveness, community, communication, collaboration, innovation, nurturing, trust, and accountability. And at this time, I'd like to turn over the award presentation to our Board Liaison for Community Engagement and Communication, Rick Velardo. And I think Diane Fosselman has joined us at the podium as well. Thank you, Diane, for being here. She's one of our committee members. We appreciate her being here this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg. Yes, I'd like to welcome Diane Fosselman, one of our representatives and certainly a council member. We welcome her. Also, another member of the group, the A-plus Award Group, Merrily Mueller. So they will be shaking hands and giving high-fives or hugs, whatever it is that they decide to do. At this time, I'm going to -- what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the name of the nominator, and then I would ask the nominator and then the award winner to come forward together, because then the nominator will have something to read about the award winner. Does that make sense? Are you all good with that? Okay. So the first award nominator is Sarah Edelson. So Ara, Sarah, please come forward.
Well, thank you so much, everyone. It is an honor to be here, to be able to introduce to you Sheila Ebrecht, whom I've worked with for six years in my position as Behavior Specialist for the district. Sheila is an extremely competent, intelligent, motivated individual who's dedicated to Westerville students, staff, the administration, and her community. She works at both McVeigh and Huber Ridge Elementary Schools, but her impact, I would say, reaches far beyond those two buildings. Sheila always goes above and beyond her responsibilities as a mental health specialist to continuously support our students and staff by tailoring her services to meet their individual needs. She's in constant contact with parents and community agencies to ensure that our students in Westerville are receiving the paramount services and care that they need and deserve. In her time at Westerville, Sheila has spearheaded an effort to bring pottery wheels to both Huber and McVeigh Elementary Schools for our students with emotional disabilities to participate in therapeutic programming. She additionally, this school year, collaborated with the special ed department to be able to bring music therapy to those same kiddos, and that's another vital component to their treatment programming. She gives 110% of herself to her job, her students, and the families with whom she works. She is one of the most caring and compassionate individuals I've ever met. She takes pride in her students, their work, and the success that they experience. I've seen Sheila spend hours in emergency rooms with families experiencing mental health crises in order to ensure that their child was receiving the best services and that they felt supported while they were going through such a difficult time. She is the one of the most ethical people and reliable people I've ever met, and she has an outgoing personality that radiates to everyone around her. A two-minute speech can't express my love for Sheila, her talents, her contributions, and the immense size of her heart. I am very proud to call her a colleague, but I'm even more proud to call her my friend.
And the next nominator I'd like to call forward is Sandy Jones.
My name is Sandy Jones. I'm the attendance clerk at Huber Ridge. I'm the one that ding, answers the ding-dong bell. And -- which is kind of irritating. And this is my friend Kristen. She works in the back office, because she's the instructional coach. And I nominated her because -- where to start? Kristen does so, so much around Huber Ridge. If you need instructional coach, you call her. She'll make you a chart, she'll send you information. Teacher needs help with Lexia, DreamBox, all of those other things. I don't know what they are, but she does. She can get your password, she can figure out what the problem is. If she doesn't know, she knows somebody in this room who will do it. I discovered she knows everybody. If a kid needs help, you go to her. Do you get a pattern here? Everything happens because she's there. But she also does some fun things around our building. She's been in charge of reading night, calling everybody to come and help, getting stuff for the -- if you need encouragement, she's there. She's just like the Energizer Bunny in our building, and we all love her. Thank you.
The next nominator I'd like to call forward is Lisa Bar or Bear?
Hi, my name's Lisa Bear. I am the parent of Ella Bear, a first-grade student at McVeigh Elementary School in Ms. Wagner's class. And from the moment we joined McVeigh Elementary School last summer, Jocelyn Wagner has been an advocate for my daughter Ella. Ella transferred from another school in Westerville when we purchased our home last fall. Despite feeling a little anxious about the changes, we were very excited to join McVeigh. Jocelyn welcomed our family with open arms. I shared with Jocelyn my concerns for making sure that Ella had a positive school experience. She struggles with ADHD, and while she's very smart, she often struggles, has a difficult time focusing, completing her work, informing and maintaining friendships with her peers. Jocelyn and I communicate on a regular basis, practically daily. I've got her cell phone number, and I'm not afraid to use it. She's always willing to try new things to help Ella be successful in school, and often goes above and beyond what she's asked to do. We truly work together as a team, and I appreciate that more than she probably knows. Jocelyn volunteers her personal time to enrich the lives of her students. She attends every PTA-sponsored event and fundraiser, and once attended a counseling session with me to discuss how we could work as a team together to support Ella. The counselor said in all of her years as a counselor, she has never had a teacher willing to attend a session about one of her students. And on top of it being on a Saturday morning, the appointment was scheduled on the weekend that Jocelyn was moving. It is my honor to present Jocelyn Wagner to the board this evening. Thank you.
I think you will see a theme of going above and beyond all throughout these awards. Very powerful. Thank you, ladies. At this time, Kalila Baker -- At this time, Kalila Baker could not be here tonight, but she nominated the award winner Elaine Morgansky. So Elaine, would you come forward? I get to read what she wrote. Have you read what she wrote?
No.
Oh, you're going to cry. This again is from Kalila Baker, a parent. "My daughter, Samaya, has been a student in Westerville City Schools since kindergarten, and Mrs. Morgansky is the best-rounded, all-in teacher she has ever had. I myself am a teacher, and I recognize many golden traits in her. Mrs. Morgansky has always presented the education of students as a team effort. She works with the other third-grade teachers in her building to ensure that each child is receiving math instruction based on their needs. She, in collaboration with other teachers, moves students through math standards by grouping the students based on strengths and needs. The groups are fluid, and my daughter has flowed through several groups and is experiencing growth and success in math. She has made sincere efforts to partner with our family in growing my daughter in other ways. When we noticed she was struggling with listening in class and her organizational skills, I reached out to Mrs. Morgansky via email to let her know we are working on those skills at home. She promptly responded to my email, encouraged my daughter the next day, and sent home a behavior chart tailored specifically to my daughter and her needs. It was very touching to know she was invested in my child's growth. Mrs. Morgansky excels in creating innovative curriculum. This year, I was amazed to see some of the inquiry in project-based learning that my daughter was engaged in by her. In science, students explored matter by making pancakes. In social studies, they completed a cost-benefit analysis by making ice cream sundays." I need to visit your class. "My daughter has even collaborated with other students and made a commercial for a store with actual products under Mrs. Morgansky's instruction. Mrs. Morgansky always takes time to note any unusual behavior in my child. If anything is out of the ordinary, I always receive an email detailing the behavior. Unfortunately, we had to experience the death of a much-loved pet this year. As expected, my daughter was very upset. She not only offered comfort and cheer to my daughter, she brought her a sympathy card. It was very touching. Mrs. Morgansky's instruction is well-planned and data-driven. At parent-teacher conferences, she is prepared with documentation and data on my daughter's progress in school. The assignments and homework that she sends home is always meaningful, encourages deeper learning. My daughter's growth this year has been wonderful. I feel very blessed that my daughter was placed in Mrs. Elaine Morgansky's classroom for a critical grade. She has consistently presented her classroom and instruction as well-managed, caring, and full of new learning. It is with all the aforementioned and more that I choose to nominate such an outstanding educator for the A-plus award." The next nominee had three people nominate her: Julie Stephan Adams, Erica Hinkle, and Linda Wyler. But I believe Julie will be the one coming forward to make this nomination and read.
Katie Pelini is a teacher at Genoa Middle School, and I would like to read my nomination of her, just so you will know how important she is in our lives. Katie Pelini is an amazing teacher that gives so much of herself to the students with whom she works. My daughter Chloe is one of Katie's math students. Chloe has an autoimmune disorder that can interfere with her school performance. She used to have much difficulty with math and literally came home in tears almost daily her entire sixth-grade year due to her frustrations in math class. We had decided to homeschool Chloe her seventh-grade year just for math, because Chloe was having so much anxiety about returning to school and to math class. She said she felt incompetent in math, and it caused her severe anxiety to go to class and work in the groups. During the August 2015 registration procedure at Genoa Middle School, we accidentally met Katie Pelini when she examined Chloe's registration form and noticed no math class was scheduled. At the time, I brushed aside, simply explaining that we had approval to homeschool in math. Katie immediately became genuinely concerned and sincerely wanted to help. She gave me her cellphone number and asked me to please call her and just talk with her about our decision. Our phone conversation the following day was so impressive to me as a parent. Katie sincerely wanted to work with Chloe and promised me that if we could just give it a try, she would do everything in her power to get Chloe to like math class. Katie's enthusiasm, motivation, and sheer commitment to help my daughter convinced me to give it a try, although honestly, I didn't think at the time it would really work. Katie talked to Chloe on the phone the night before school started, and Chloe agreed to give it a try. I was shocked, but Chloe told me that if a teacher cares about her this much before she is even her student, she owed it to that teacher to give things a try. Katie Pelini has done the impossible this year. Chloe enjoys math, and even more incredibly, sees herself as a good math student. This change in Chloe did not occur without incredible effort from Katie. Chloe knows she is welcome to come in any day at lunch for extra math help and has done so on many occasions. Katie has given her phone number to my daughter and encouraged her to call, even if it is just because she's stuck on a homework question. Katie's rearranged groups and tried a number of combinations of students to work with Chloe that allowed her to feel less incompetent and more of a team. She's connected with me a number of times just to confirm that things were going well for Chloe with math, and to reassure us that if we needed anything, we could just give her a call. Katie has reached out to Chloe personally by talking with her about running and swimming, the two sports my daughter loves. Sometimes Chloe will point out that she has a lot of math homework, but then she will immediately say it is because of Mrs. Pelini that she is able to do the homework. Chloe emphatically agrees with me that Katie Pelini is an A-plus teacher, and we both feel so blessed and fortunate to have her influence in Chloe's life. She is truly one of the most genuine, motivated, and selfless teachers. Katie Pelini deserves the A-plus award for the inspiring work that she does."
The next presenters I'd like to ask to come forward are Mary Lee Mueller and Ryan Mueller.
When I think of the characteristics of an A-plus teacher, I picture Mrs. Maria Soysen, who is an amazing math teacher at Walnut Springs. Transitioning from elementary school to middle school can be challenging for students and parents alike, but Mrs. Soysen is quick to put fears to rest. Using email, Instagram, and Twitter on a weekly basis, she is constantly informing parents what is going on in her class and the rest of the building. As a new parent to middle school, I can't begin to express how much this means to me. She makes herself available multiple times per week before and after school, and even during lunch, to help students with any questions they may have. She encourages the children to ask questions during class and genuinely wants them to succeed, not only this year, but for years to come. She sends out emails with questions for parents to bring awareness to the things we need to do to prepare our student for high school. Mrs. Soysen piloted Math Night for all students. She welcomed their families to stop by the school on an evening this past January for some math fun. My son, who was less than confident in math, actually admits now that he likes math, and getting him to do his math homework is no longer a chore. As if this wasn't enough, she is the teacher liaison for PTSA and the bowling club instructor. Mrs. Soysen is more than a teacher who is doing her job. She is an A-plus teacher deserving of recognition. She is giving, fair, respectful, nurturing, and trustworthy. We are lucky to have her in our district.
Mrs. Soysen is a very good math teacher. She has helped me so much, and she makes math very easy to understand. She also wants you to do very well. She's available throughout the week for math help. I went from disliking math to liking it. She has done amazing things for my school.
The next nominators I'd like to ask to come forward are Kate Davidson and Michael Heinzey.
Great teachers demonstrate care for their students, and great teammates demonstrate care for their colleagues, too. Stacy Alonso has demonstrated both of these critical attributes at Westerville South High School this year. In August of this school year, our Special Education Department hired four brand-new teachers, three of whom were totally green, and they're in our special ed department. And I'll be honest, I was a little nervous. The life of a first-year educator is very difficult. A first-year intervention specialists have it much harder. Learning how to do an IEP paperwork, PR1s, FBAs, manifestation determination worksheets, and various other sorts of paperwork, I don't, those are just the ones I know about. And teach. So without Stacy, this would have been very, very difficult. She rose to the occasion. I just kept noticing her night after night, four, five o'clock, sitting by a computer with one or three of these new teachers at a time, walking through how to fill out the paperwork. I have a feeling sometimes they were complaining because it got quiet when I walked into the room. They would just vent, maybe. And then I suspect sometimes she was a shoulder to cry on. Without her, I don't know if we would have seen these new teachers after winter break. While doing that, Stacy did not let up on what she does for our students. Who better to talk about that than South sophomore Kate Davidson?
In sixth grade, I struggled with school, friends, and being confident. So in seventh and eighth grade, I attended Marburn Academy because public school was too much of a challenge for me. At Marburn, I learned so much, and I knew I couldn't be there forever. So I decided to go back to public school for my freshman year. Not only was I very nervous, but my parents were as well. So I knew these next four years were going to be a real struggle, just like in sixth grade. I assumed this because in sixth grade, I didn't have a voice, I didn't have someone I could go to whenever I needed a paper checker just to talk about my future. Now I do. Miss Alonso is always there for me, and she has changed my life and many others. No matter what I, no matter what, I know she'll be there for me. Her door is always open. I finally have that voice. Thanks to Miss Alonso, I have the grades I never would have imagined I would have. I have a great group of friends, and I'm enrolled in IB classes, which is another thing I never would have even considered in sixth grade. And I finally have a future. I plan on attending the University of Tampa or Capital University and their education program. Then I'll come back to Westerville and be a fifth-grade teacher at one of Westerville's many elementary schools. I owe my whole future to Miss Alonso. Without her, I don't know where I'd be right now.
And I'd like to invite up our final nominators: Brenner Jung, Jeremiah Vanest, and Arjun Pandya.
Good evening. I'm Brenner Jung, and I'm a student of Mr. Odom's. He teaches IB physics, which handles some very difficult concepts like relativity and quantum physics. Westerville has a strong reputation of having a school district filled with great students and great educators alike. While it's gratifying for students to be recognized for our scholastic successes, it's equally as important to recognize teachers for getting us there. Without men and women who are exceedingly talented at inspiring and guiding students, our school system would be nowhere near the level of excellence that we enjoy today. And I believe Jeff Odom embodies this responsibility. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Arjun. Teachers like Mr. Odom are short in supply, and it's been a privilege to work with someone who's been willing to go above and beyond what's necessary to help the students for their exams and further education. So it's with great honor I nominated him.
After having Mr. Odom as my teacher for my IB physics class, it is clear to me that he is deserving of this award. He never fails to put a smile on the faces of his students while simultaneously preparing us for the rigorous examinations that await us in May, which unfortunately are right around the corner. He is able to balance teaching, coaching, and home life successfully, and while doing this, he puts forth the effort to help us prepare for these exams, and that's why I think he should receive this recognition.
You just witnessed an incredible amount of awards for people from poetry, to giving out of grief, to teachers being nominated by students, and to, I would suggest, a snapshot of the excellence that we see within our schools and throughout our district. And before I dismiss you, all of you who are award winners, I think you are going into the hallway. There will be some pictures taken. And nominators, you are all dismissed unless you would like to stay for the rest of the Board of Education meeting. So obviously, we will see you later. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience, as we have some technical issues up here, all taken care of. We move on to Agenda Item 4.01. Considering approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held April 11, 2016, we just ask, are there any questions, any comments regarding that? The only thing I note is that we had one The only thing I note is that we had one name that was misspelled. We've corrected that spelling, but that's the only thing we had in there. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Move on to Agenda Item 4.0, I'm sorry, 5.01. Westerville City Schools and City of Westerville Project, a shared communication project. And I think that Bob Lynd is going to, you're going to share with us a little bit, Bob?
Okay, I've been given rights to the clicker, so I'll do my best. Yeah. Well, thank you for the time tonight. Actually, gonna head to the very first slide. Back in 2013, September, the District Crisis Safety Committee identified a security initiative regarding some radio coverage or weakness in radio coverage and radio communication within our school buildings. From those meetings, when we talk about the radio coverage, we kind of reference them as dead spots. It's not a great word, but that's kind of seems to be the trend. So when we talk about dead spots, it's literally when radio communication cannot get from point A to point B. The transmission's not able to take effect. The committee decided that that needed to be investigated, looked at, and addressed. So from that, a subcommittee was created to evaluate that. And the first thing I'd like to do, so I don't forget, is to acknowledge the folks who I know have spent an enormous amount of time on this project. Steve Moreland, Corporal Freeny, Chris Wineset, Mrs. Meiser, and Chief, who is here tonight as well, Chief Morbizer, sorry. From that committee meeting, we decided to focus on what the issues were, what the goals should be. The top two goals, one was to standardize the school district radios across the entire district, making sure that we're all using the same protocol, using the same equipment. The primary focus is to create an interoperable system that allows seamless communication and extended coverage for both Westerville City Schools, so our school building to school building, and staff members, including first responders. So allowing first responders to have deeper access into our buildings and them not having the same issues we have in case of an emergency if their communication was unable to reach outside of our buildings. So the research and development, as I said, it started in 2013, so I will bear you all the meetings. But I promise you, there was an enormous amount of meetings with vendors. Technology solutions were investigated heavily from Wi-Fi, cellular, UHF, VHF, digital, and a combination of all of those together. We made many site visits to other school districts, other businesses and entities who have gone through the same or similar situation as we have. We had demos where we actually took the solutions that were recommended to us. We brought them in-house and tested them to see if they really would work. Then we utilized our vendor selection to evaluate all of the different options with the team that I had mentioned earlier, to, to really get a grasp on. When you look at the school district, we have one mode of operation. It talks a different language when, what the police department is fire, that talks a different language. We had to figure out a way to get them both to talk together to make this happen. So those meetings were vital to the success of how far we did make it, although it did seem to take quite a while. In summary, the solution is to construct a standalone digital UHF radio system. What that really means is, when we talk about a walkie-talkie or a radio, the radio is a UHF versus VHF. The two things that we focus on, UHF penetrates through walls. I didn't know that in the beginning. I did learn that. VHF bounces off walls and goes around on the outside. So some of the issues we were facing was the fact that you don't even have the right equipment to get where it needed to get to. We would construct a broadcast from a 180-foot tower located at the transportation complex. The reason why that location was selected, we did topography studies. It's a centrally-located, district-owned property. It has the space for the infrastructure to be held and a generator backup, a case, obviously, if we were to lose power, it would continue to stay up and running. The solution would replace all of the school resource officer's radios, as well as radios for our schools, administration, maintenance, warehouse, and transportation, which the timing for the transportation side is impeccable. That system's been in place a little over 10 years now. We continue to put Band-Aids on it to try to keep that thing up and running. And it scares us the moment it starts to blip because you can't have 120 buses out running and not be able to communicate. So I'm just acknowledging that. But it does work, but it's running to the end of its lifecycle. The capabilities of this system are extremely in-depth. I would skim over the top and be glad to answer questions. It's not just walkie-talkie to walkie-talkie. It is a backup software system. It's a real-time software called Smart Dispatch. It offers several capabilities. Some of those are highlighted there. The GPS positioning. GPS positioning is what it is. Wherever the radio is, it'll tell you exactly where it is. So if it's in a school building in Room 104, it's going to show that radio in Room 104. Why is that important? One of the things that we focused on was from an emergency or what you'll hear sometimes is a banner or man-down notification. What that is, is a distress signal that says, "I can't communicate. I have an emergency. I need to let someone know." There's a button, as an example, or a protocol that they can push. It automatically sends that notification. We can denote where that goes, but to staff members, to local law enforcement, to let them know that this radio, who will be identified to a school building, to an individual in a particular room, the GPS positioning gets sent. They know exactly where the distress is coming from and that the distress was activated by that employee or someone who needed, who needs help. Emergency management system. What that will allow to happen as an example is if we were to have a tragedy, we can actually select individuals, individual groups, as well as the police department to say, "I need," if there's a lockdown at a particular building, "I need to speak to these four individuals. I need to have the law enforcement involved. I need to have Dr. Kellogg and a board member. We need to be communicating together." You can do that literally in 10 seconds. You can push that together and, and it's a private, sorry, it's a private call. No one else can hear it. They're the only ones allowed. And the only one that can change it has the key behind the scenes, which we would, we would decipher who that individual might be. But it would allow to quickly facilitate an emergency or a situation that needed to be addressed. The expanded coverage is critical. We would now have full building coverage for all of our buildings. There would be no dead spot. So if a law enforcement goes into our buildings, our staff member, I don't care if you're under the bleachers in the boiler room on top of the roof, it doesn't matter where you are, if you need to communicate, you can communicate. Building-to-building communication, I thought this one was a pretty neat advantage to this particular system. You can have an individual at Central High School, principal or administrator, nurse, whoever has, can actually communicate to a staff member in Hawthorne. The way that the infrastructure is built, it would allow for that to happen. Some of the pieces that I think that are important to that, not all of our buildings have a school resource officer. They monitor the traffic, the traffic on our schools, so they would actually have the ability to even quickly respond or start that dispatching from monitoring the inner-school traffic from a building that doesn't have an SRO. So it would enhance that as well. The actual radio coverage for not only our buildings, but for our school buses, includes all of Central Ohio and surrounding areas outside of that. So the strength of the signal, for lack of a better word, goes out farther than we go. So we wouldn't have an issue outside of our buildings as well. So I wanted to make sure that we address that. From the emergency management piece, to go back up real quick, I did forget, there's other key pieces that, that law enforcement helped us with to look at, which was an open-mic situation. Not to be tragic here, but if we had a situation where someone, we knew there was an issue, we got the banner button, we can't respond, we don't know what's happening, they can actually open up the mic. No one knows it. They can hear the activity that's happening on in or around any radio they choose to select so that they can try to gain information, to try to help, give themselves a better shot to help that individual.
Open it up remotely.
Remotely. Yeah, you don't have to go in, say, "Hey, hold on a second." Yeah, you can do it from, from a PC. At the same time, there was discussion about, because of the, the private nature or the security level, well, what happens if a ra, a radio gets lost or stolen? We can kill, it's called kill the radio, shut the radio down or disable the radio. It still has the GPS. We'll be able to find it if they turn it on. It will let us know when it, when it is active, similar to your cellphone, if you have an iPhone, like a find-your-iPhone, that type of theory. But we can disable it and activate it so that we wouldn't want someone out on the outside having access to our system. The next slide is partnership and, and Chief Morbizer, if you wouldn't mind, I think it's important that maybe he share from their perspective and, and he's a much better talker, too.
Thanks for being here tonight, Chief. We appreciate it. I know you're a busy man.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Thank you. And I appreciate this opportunity. As you're aware, for probably the last 20 years, we've been working on school safety plans with the school and public safety here in Westerville and the surrounding regions. As a matter of fact, for the citizens, and you know very well, that became one of the templates when the Attorney General enacted legislation on the school safety plans. They used the Westerville plan as one to look at. So we can all be very proud of that. Now we need to move on to the next step. And unfortunately, we need to talk about things like disaster preparedness and crisis management. When it comes to that, interoperability through communications is a primary concern to everyone. And this will assist the school system and public safety in addressing those issues and concerns. We talk about timing, and this is one of the times where we need to consider that. From the city side, we are in the process of buying all new radios and enacting new in-car radio systems also, to the tune of about $1.5 million. That will replace all of our radios. The city has been generous with us, with council, to actually push those purchases up instead of pushing them out over three years. We will be purchasing them within the next year. Those radios, both in-car and the walkies, will be compatible with the new system we're talking about in the schools. So when we look at shared services, it's beneficial on both parts. As you know, or as you may know, we've actually had to install antennas, interior, interior antennas on the high schools in order to have communications. And there are still spots where we do not have communications with the current radio system that we have. The UHF system would handle that, to where we would have open communication. What we had to do when we looked at the antennas was create a patch from our 800 system to a UHF system, which required extra timing in case of an emergency. With the new system, we won't have to do that. The officers, and especially the SROs, will have direct contact and won't have to change channels or change bands to get proper communication. So I just wanted to present from public safety side, and I know I speak for, for Chief Miller because he was in on the meetings, too. We would appreciate this great working partnership that we would have when we talk about the purchase of new communication devices and especially the tower, which would allow for better communication all the way around. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, very much for being here tonight. Bob, did you have some more to share?
Yeah, I have the, I have the bad news side. Sorry. I'm not real good at board meetings. They're not going to send me back. Yeah, so the financial part, it's really not that bad, but I had to lighten up the mood here before I deliver the message. So the total estimated cost of the project, now this is the entire project. This is all of our radios, this is the radio tower, repeaters, combiners, all these, some of the things, I have to admit, I don't even know what they are, but it does work. It's $410,535. The City of Westerville's reimbursement, that Chief talked about earlier, is they're half, they're splitting half of the, the cost of everything that is shared. So the tower and all the equipment that's behind the scenes that makes it work. But the radios, our radios, the physical things that will be in our hands around the buses, or their radios that are in their hands, we're taking care of on our own. So if there are radios, we're paying for our own radios. If they're their radios, they pay for theirs. So the Westerville City School portion is $242,846. All of these fees for Westerville City Schools that we're, we're taking a look at can be covered without any additional increase to our budget. You're going to ask me, "How is that?" So, we experienced a tremendous amount of savings in the transportation line this year with the fuel budget. Why is that? One is, we think that we're pretty good, but two, the reality is, is that the prices were much lower at the pump than anticipated. So there's a considerable amount of savings there. The other one, we actually did, we did earn, which is on the purchasing side. We threw some contract negotiations, primarily the copier fleet replacement, did save us a, a good amount there as well. Both of those two numbers alone are greater than the number that you're looking at up above. So we would not need to ask for those appropriations in addition to what we're asking for, so the budget would remain flat and we could use the savings from transportation. It's just a suggestion, but it did, it did come across, I think, as a plausible one. So from that perspective, that's the cost. Some of the good news. We did apply for a school security grant and we were awarded the grant. It is a reimbursable grant, however, you have to spend the money to get the money back. You don't get it upfront. It's $2,000 per eligible school building. All of our buildings, our school buildings are eligible, with the exception of preschool and the EOS. Preschool, they're not K through 12, and the EOS does not have an IRN number. So they're exempt. We do have some other neat opportunities from the revenue side. The tower that we would have, the reason why, the height of the tower, we had several options. We did land on the tallest one that Westerville City would allow. The reason for that is because we can actually lease space on the tower. And those, those leased spaces, up to two additional, would pay us a monthly fee that would be negotiable to Westerville City Schools. That would be revenue generating for us. I will say that those two leasing options are considerable, just from preliminary discussions people are already wanting to know. So I can only imagine if we were to negotiate that, what it could be. The other piece is, I think, a value add to our community as well, which is adding radio users to the system. They're not physically putting equipment on the tower. It's on a computer saying, "We have 10 more radios and here's our serial numbers. Make it work." It has no impact on our functionality. It doesn't cross over. They can't talk to us. It's completely siloed out. But what it does is it gives surrounding, whoever we would allow, the same capabilities we have on our system, and all have to use by radios, whereas we've kind of had to buy radios and the tower. So I think what's important is we've had some interest. We actually have some meetings tomorrow just to have more discussion about the possibilities. But interest from Otterbine University, Otterbine Police, St. Anne's, I can go on, there's quite a list, but those are a little bit of the bigger ones. But they're willing to take a look at a monthly fee to pay to have access to the system. So again, it is a tremendous offset to what our expenses upfront, and then over time, it actually will help pay for itself. So hopefully, that was the good news. The timeline. So the next step in the process, none of this happens if the planning commission doesn't approve it. So hopefully, they're listening. The meeting date is scheduled for May 25th, for them to review to see if, conceptually, this is something that they would allow. If they are, we'd like to order the tower and the equipment as soon as possible for a summer installation so that we don't have to do an installation after school starts. It is something that we could do. It is possible. We prefer not to. It'd be a little bit easier when school is out to make it all happen. We could do it if school is in session. The ultimate deadline is, I don't want to give up the grant money, funding, if we are going to move forward, which is, the submission for the invoices is October, in October of 2016. So when it's all said and done, that's the real deadline so that we don't lose that additional funding. And that is it.
Thank you, Bob. That's a tremendous report about a very important shared communication project between the schools and the city. From my fellow members, any questions, concerns, anything for Bob or the chief?
A few questions. First of all, before I say the question, I want to say how very much I appreciate the partnership with the City of Westerville. This is a huge project for all of us. I'm not just talking about the dollars. It's a huge project for all of us and it's vitally important to the health and safety of everyone concerned. Doing it in partnership makes it imminently doable for us, and I very much appreciate that, Chief. Couple of questions. And forgive me if these are ignorant.
No, they're not.
How secure is the system against hacking? And what steps were taken to ensure the security of it?
So my technology guru behind me will be able to explain a little bit better than I, so I'll let him answer that one if you don't mind. So this is Chris Wineset.
Well, one of the things that we looked at upfront is that we already have a shared network connection between us and the city. We partnered with them to do the fiber optic that's going around the outer belt and the part around the district. So we already have a secure part of that. So the part of it, as far as the communication, this is a system through Smart Dispatch that, in a, in a sense, captures the transmission and it saves it in in, and it sends it on. It does it very fast, but it comes into our in-house, it comes into our servers, it captures it, and then it sends it back out. So, and then on top of that, we've built in security features within the radio, as Bob talked earlier, that you can, we can lock down a phone. It'll be tied into the network. So, you know, Dr. Kellogg can grab any radio, I don't know if I said phone, but he can grab any radio and log in how you were, you were to log into your computer here within the district, and it would authenticate you that way. It uses the same authentication that you use here at the school. And that way, it doesn't, you have to learn multiple passwords and things like that. But it's always talking to the district to make sure that they are an authorized user. So we can also turn off their authorization, which would offer, which would also, you know, terminate their connection that they have within the radios. But it's the same encryption. Because of using it for first responders, you know, they had to make sure that it met, you know, certain criteria. And the company that we end up picking, Vasu, is the vendor. They do a lot of 911 call centers. It's kind of their specialty. So it's something they're very familiar with doing as far as the security of the system.
Thank you. That helped me a lot. Are there any concerns about the site of the tower?
Okay. Site as in the location or what it looks like?
No, the location.
Because I've had both. Not yet. As far as, as far as internally, it makes a ton of sense from a one-sided perspective. As far as the location, being centrally located in the district, it's basically in our parking lot, so to speak, up against the building. The ICE bridge, which protects all of the information that comes into the building that goes into the servers, the space at train station, including the generator, it's really, it's ideal, an ideal location, and it's a property that we own from that perspective. So when it goes to the planning commission, if anyone has an opinion, they might share their opinion about that, though.
But you have not heard anything.
I have not heard anything.
Yeah, thus far. Are there any things that we should keep in mind as regards to updating considerations? For instance, the lifespan of the system, any kind of update cost that you foresee coming within the next few years?
Sure. Good question. And backup one, because I think it'll help a little bit too on the location. It's going to be right next to a cell phone tower. And it really is less intrusive than the cell phone tower that's already there. So I don't think it'll be as unsightly as it might be if I put it in someone's backyard, kind of a thing. So in regards to the ongoing cost, there is an anticipated maintenance cost for the tower, which is estimated to be $3,000 a year. In part of the partnership, the city has agreed to split that in half with the district as well to maintain the tower and the structure. So it'd be $1,500 a year. The radios come with a five-year full warranty, which our current ones, when we buy them, we're replacing them every couple of years. So in the end, if you do a business model, I shared with Dr. Kellogg in an earlier conversation, the business model actually shows that these radios, although more expensive than what we're currently buying, the business model shows that they're actually cheaper over the lifecycle. So in the end, it's a little bit of a punch up front, but it's going to come out in the wash, and the end actually come ahead. Outside of that, the infrastructure, there's a little bit of cost, just to make sure if there's break fixed. But the majority of the warranty is going to be at least three years. So we won't see anything then. And it'll be just like computer maintenance from that. So I won't know what that would look like until it happens.
That's very helpful. The seamless integration of all of these systems is, you know, often very difficult to achieve. So taking the time from 2013 to now doesn't seem to me to be an inordinate use of time to get it right. In my mind, this is something we absolutely need to do. The cost in terms of possibilities, if we don't have it, are too much to consider. And so I very much appreciate and support the idea of using those savings. You managed to get us transportation. I appreciate that a great deal. The partnership with the city and the need for us to make these changes, to me, suggest we should move forward sooner rather than later.
Are you going to share the story that I was going to share?
I don't know. So you go first, and then I'll tell you if I did.
Well, I was thinking of the morning when it was a little after seven, and I sent you a text that said...
And I know the story you're going to share. Now, yes, this is a solution to that problem. Thank you.
Right. So 20 after seven, send Kellogg a text, hey, what's going on at South? My daughter had sent me a text saying that there was some, some things going on, wanted to know if everything was okay. But they couldn't get to you or get to people they needed to because of a dead zone. That was a little scary to me. So yeah, I'm fully on board. I really, I am glad we are partnering. I hope we can find more partnerships. I was sitting here writing down Otterbine-St. Anne's. I think there's some great opportunities for us. Yeah, so thank you for your work. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I can tell you from my experience, and Deb Meiser will attribute to this, whenever we've had situations that required communicating across just within our own district on issues, and then trying to cross over to first responders, and everybody's reaching for cell phones and scrolling through contacts, and should I text? Should I call? Their phone's busy. They're not texting. My phone's dead. It's just a nightmare. I, in a previous position in Southwest, and they put in a similar system to this when I was there, and we actually did a live exercise at one of the intermediate schools in the summertime that involved, and much like Westerville, there are multiple first responder jurisdictions, as well as the school district. And we simulated from this is the start of a regular day to everybody coming to the event. And the communication was flawless across that. And that's 125 square mile district. And so our ability to communicate with the first responders with each other and organize ourselves, and the, as Bob described, the grouping that you have in, in the system already that's pre-programmed, so depending on the kind of event and who you needed, you knew who, who needed to be involved in the communication. And you didn't have like a cell phone in one ear, someone else's cell phone someplace else, and trying to text someone at the same time. So it's a phenomenal system from, from my perspective. And Bob and others have done yeoman's work to get us to this point. So I appreciate that, because I know there's a lot that went on. And he's, at times, been frustrated.
Not really.
But the other thing you see is that there are people in that shop of our organization, when you think about the details and the business model that Bob's gone through, and Chris and the rest of the folks, they get it in terms of trying to deliver improved service, in this case, safety for students, against the resources we have. And this takes us to a whole new level in terms of school safety that I think is just, I applaud them for, because that's, that's keeping your eye on the ball and the eye on the prize. So I appreciate all of their efforts, Deb, the team, Bob, Chris, and everybody else who's been involved with this. It's kind of good, good stuff.
Any other comments, questions, concern for Bob or Chris or Chief?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I was going to say, I think that this is a really necessary project, given the way things are today and the importance of school safety. I also appreciate the fact that you guys applied for a grant to help cover some of the costs, and then also some of the other things that you're doing to try and capture some revenue to keep this cost down over time. Thanks for the effort.
Thank you. I just echo that it's, that it's, that it's an unfortunate necessity. And thank you, Bob. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chief, for really the work, and I know many others as well. Just acknowledge them as well. Now, this is coming to us as an update. Is there a need for a motion second approval of this, or since they are getting under budget, we're good to go?
Nope. It's part of their, we just wanted to be aware of what we're doing.
Thank you.
It's part of their allocation. Unless you want to change their allocation in the future, it's a go.
Thank you for what you're doing. Move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much. Thank you. Yes, you can applaud them. Yes, that's good. Yes. We move on to Agenda Item 6.01, Public Comments Related to Action Items. Reminder that you have five minutes to address the board in the public comment section of the agenda. Please remember to address the agenda item that you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The timer will be shown on the screen. Mr. Hershizer will call time when five minutes have elapsed. Please address your comments to the board and not to the audience. Our first speaker for the evening is Meta Han.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Kellogg, I want to ask, first of all, did all of you have a chance to read the letter from Mr. Burgess, the email from Mr. Burgess? If you've all had a chance to read it, I won't read that. Okay. So I'm going to follow up with my own comments about that. This topic is 7.02, win-win. Following our Franklin County Central Committee meeting a couple weeks ago, I had the opportunity to speak with Representative Mike Duffy about his efforts to legislate the establishment of boundaries for Columbus City Schools and the surrounding suburban districts. I know that you already know the positions that are held by other, by the other suburban districts. I specifically asked Representative Duffy what I could do, and he suggested that I speak with you and ask you to support his efforts, and that you, with that support, also contact our representative, Ann Gonzalez, to get her support for the establishment of these boundaries. This discussion is not a discussion about the students in the Westerville School District. As you yourselves have already defined it, this is a financial issue. You owe this due diligence to the taxpayers of Westerville. Please work with Representative Duffy to finally get these boundaries established. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Meta. Our second speaker this evening is Peg Duffy.
I have three agenda items that I would like to address. First, 4.01, you've already dealt with, the text of the minutes being online. I nearly dropped dead when I saw it. It's been decades since we have seen the text of the minutes. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This certainly is going to aid us in the future. When we want to go back and comment on something, it will enable us to be sure that we're accurate. Second item, same as Meta talked about, 7.02, win-win discussion. I guess I ask myself, why is it under financials? It's more than just the money. It is an opportunity to make the current boundaries permanent. It involves people. Please take advantage of that opportunity. Then the final, 12.05, this is perplexing. Where does this one-time permission for the superintendent fit into policy? Other things that are in policy are given a number and have a code reference. This one bothers me. It seems to imply you are anticipating a resignation between now and the next time there's a board meeting. Why the pressing need? We're not at that period in the summer where we're not meeting. The one thing that crossed my mind was, are we in a situation like we see in the business world very often where someone is told, we're not going to fire you, but you have so many days, 30 days, 60 days, to find yourself another job? I'm just skeptical about the reason for that one.
Thank you, Peg. Moving on to Agenda Item 7.01, Resolution to Approve Financial Reports Investments, March 2016. Financial report lists all funds ending March 2016. I believe I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
I need a motion.
Motion there.
And now a second.
Second.
And I believe Bart, you will be speaking to this?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. This is the financials ending March 31st, 2016. Our year-to-date, this is for general fund only, our year-to-date receipts are $151,324,000. Our year-to-date expenditures are $112,763,000. We have an unencumbered fund balance of $95,396,000. Year-to-date receipts for all funds, $198.6 million. Year-to-date expenditures, $158.5 million, and an all-fund balance of $115,868,000. That's into that report.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Any questions, comments, concerns? Will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cottler?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. We move on to Agenda Item 7.02, Win-Win Discussion. And I think, Mr. Griffith, you're going to begin this?
Yes, I will start this. One of the reasons we did put this under financial, it's as good a place as any for the most part, and we figured we had enough going on with reports. We would start off with the, with the item as to, as far as why it is concerning that it's financial. For those of you who, who don't know, this agreement was passed in 1986. At one point, we had achieved the amount of, we were paying Columbus City Schools of $975,000. Back, that was back in 2011. There was some calculation errors committed as far as what the payments were done, mainly due to the recession through that time. There was a correction. We had a refund over the period of three payments. We are currently paying $511,000 per year to save $30 million. And I know, you know, there's other districts in this agreement that pay more. For instance, I'll share, Dublin pays $1 million to protect $60 million. So it is a financial issue as well as a boundary issue. You know, I've heard, I'll basically say, one of the reasons that concerned me is, being a financial officer, I, for me, I would not recommend that you get rid of this program because you would be putting currently, under the Ohio law, you would be putting $30 million at risk to this district. I'm all for the boundaries being approved and sanctioned and whatever we got to do to state legislature. But until that happens, as the treasurer of this district, financially speaking, I wouldn't give you that recommendation. It's almost like telling you, you've never had a fire in 30 years, why pay fire insurance? You're, you're paying a coverage. Some people call it extortion. Some people call it whatever, whatever you want to call it. There are nine groups of superintendents who put this agreement together that see it as a win-win financially to Columbus City Schools and to Westerville City Schools. So financially, I would not recommend that you get out of this agreement. There's too much at risk under current state law. So I'll pass it over to Dr. Kellogg.
And I agree with Mr. Griffith. As the board knows, he and I have represented the district in a variety of meetings over the last couple months with other suburban school districts. And those meetings have included opportunities to talk about the current agreement and whether or not the parties involved, the Suburbans and City of Columbus, that's the agreement, had any interest in revisiting elements of the, the agreement. And, and to date, at least in this latest round, those discussions didn't yield any plausible modifications to the win-win. I think part of, and we should remind ourselves, when we, this is roughly 5,500 students that are affected by this. And to that point, I think that the, what I viewed as our primary responsibility, has been alluded here this evening, isn't the financial, it's the stabilization of the boundaries. And I think what we have to remember is that the concept of win-win was bought about to find agreement between what I'll view as the feuding parties so that it would stabilize the boundaries. Solutions that do anything but involve all, all interested parties, regardless of your view of which side of the table you're on. Certainly, if you're suburban, and I've heard the word extortion, insurance, et cetera, on one side of the fence is to say, we're getting, what we're, what we're paying to Columbus is one of those things. The agreement actually refers to it as a revenue sharing model. It's based on a percentage of the property tax increase that's not inflationary. So it's a revenue sharing model between the two parties. So solutions, I think, that don't involve the, the two parties' interests are probably going to mean dissension, disagreement, and destabilization. Whether or not that comes from legislators deciding that they're going to enact something without both interested parties, you can only imagine what that brings. Whether that means a district deciding it's going to go out on its own and explore what that possibility means. All of those are possibilities that are going to bubble up destabilizing those boundaries. So as I look at it, the, the solution is a win-win. Has to be win-win so that we, as a school district, our property tax owners in that part of the district who are in win-win and are paying Westerville City Schools property taxes and have been for a long, long time, that they understand that we're committed to stabilizing those boundaries. So until someone presents something that I think removes the possibility that there's going to be arguments and dissension, I think our best bet is to explore when the opportunity comes up, which should be more than the... comes up, which should be more than the few-week time period that pops up every six years to discuss whether or not there's a better agreement. So there have been conversations, there have been discussions about the financials, but at the end of the day, in respect to our district and our priority, stabilizing the boundaries is our first priority. If we can do that and change the financial conditions to our benefit, great. But we're only one part of a win-win. A win-lose sets up a fight. And doesn't matter which side you're on, it'll be a fight, of whatever sort it is. Attorneys, legislators, whatever it is, it'll be a fight. And that won't stabilize the boundaries. So a lot of smart people over 30 years have checked on this. If you consider superintendents somewhat bright, a lot of different superintendents, a lot of different attorneys, a lot of different individuals that looked at it, and to date, it seems to survive and do what it's supposed to do. And I know sometimes we say, let's try something new, but, you know, the old adage, if anything broke, don't fix it. So I appreciate that the board has been very attentive to this. You've asked great questions, you've read a lot, you've asked Bart and I great questions about the whole thing, and I think you're representing the school district. As you know the information at this moment, and we know there's still some time left on the meter before the whole thing closes up and it's bundled up for its next six years, but as it stands today, I think you're doing what's in the best interest of the district financially in terms of stabilizing the boundaries, until someone presents something better.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg, Mr. Griffith. I just want to throw it open to the floor for any kind of discussion, any, we want to be as transparent with our thinking, and tonight is really just a discussion time. Are there questions that you have for these two gentlemen? It is true, we've dug into it, we've asked questions, but certainly, maybe to ask questions up in front of our constituency. Anything that you all would like to share at this point? Yes, ma'am?
I don't have any questions. I've looked into this quite a bit, but I think that the win-win agreement, the way it is, based on current law, it really is important to protect the boundaries that we have right now, to keep the district stable. I also see it as just a revenue-sharing mechanism, similar to other things that sort of help local government entities get along and play nicely together. I know for the cities and townships, they have the joint economic development districts, and I think that this is kind of a similar type of tool to help different entities get along and keep things stable for the better of the community. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Bat, Bat. Sorry, Bart, I meant to say your name.
Bat!
Holy moly. Bart and I have batted around the pros and cons, and what conclusion I have come to is it's not worth the gamble at this point, for me personally. It is absolutely about finances, but more importantly, it's about 5,500 kids and stability for those kids, in my mind. We need to be fiscally prudent, and I think we are in this win-win agreement. And I think we need to hang tight until we have something definitive out there that will set boundaries and not just take a chance. So, sorry, Bat.
My thoughts about win-win tend to be fairly well-known. I've had a lot of time to tell them to people. I have not changed my mind, even though I do spend a lot of time going back, rereading the agreements, rereading 1986, rereading 1992, rereading, reconsidering any of the changes that occur with the win-win agreement. For me, it comes down, in some ways, to considering past and future. Think about what life was like for school districts, suburban school districts, prior to win-win. Westerville City School boundaries used to be much larger than they are now. They used to extend down into the eastern area with that tax-rich area of the county. They extended well over into 161. Many years ago, the 161 to Morse Road area, which was Westerville City Schools, used to be called the Golden Triangle, and we lost that because there was no win-win. There was very little protection for suburban boundaries. When I was still in my teens, there was a major land grab. It was one of the last big land grabs before win-win occurred. And that, basically overnight, took about 3,000 kids from Westerville City Schools. And that shift in our boundaries, while it doesn't look like a whole lot when you carve it out of the map, you know, here and there and everywhere, that shift in our boundaries sent this district into a financial tailspin that lasted for years because we had no stability. I don't want to see that be the norm again for our district. I don't want to have not only those 5,500 kids and their families worrying about where they're going to go to school next year. I don't want to put $30 million of tax revenue at risk, and I want to think about what it looks like in the future. If we say, well, a lot of people want to renegotiate win-win. What's their agenda? Who does it benefit to renegotiate win-win? What risk do we put this district in if we throw it up in the air and leave it in the hands of the legislature? Or if we put ourselves in the midst of a win-lose situation that involves many attorneys, much conflict, and many different downward spirals for all the districts involved? I am not ever willing to go there for the school district. You also have to look at it in a larger context. If we threw it into the hands of the legislature, yeah, it went well in 1986, amazingly well. It only went well because of the massive destruction to district boundaries that had occurred over the prior couple of decades. The political will was there. At this point in time, throw that in there, you bring in all of the other areas of the state. You bring in all of those other districts, you bring in all of those cities, you bring in all of those competing interests, and you try and iron out something that would give us what we already have? I don't want to risk that. That's just not in the best interests of anyone that lives in the Westerville City Schools. So for me, it's thinking about what would happen if we said, you know, we're not going to play. And it's also about what I know happened in the past when we didn't have the opportunity to have win-win. It's also about, for me, stabilizing the boundaries where they are now. It's also with the full knowledge of what has happened every time there's been any renegotiation of win-win. It takes a really long time. It does bring in all those smart people. And even just negotiating a payment mess-up in 2010 took months and months and months. The renegotiation that happened in 1992 took months, 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 months. It's not something that you say, let's renegotiate and not move forward with at this point in time. It's not something that I would be willing to say to one lone representative, sure, run with it. No, no, I can't do that. It's also not something that I hope people continue to talk about in the way that they do as ransom money, blood money, any of those ugly terms that decry what win-win is actually about and that lead people to think it is something it never was and never will be. So for me, where we are protects us. If there is renegotiation that comes down the road, yes, we'll be part of those conversations. But in no way do we do anything that jeopardizes the health, safety, security, boundaries, tax base, taxpayers of this school district.
Thank you. Anyone else? My nickel and a half, I would back up half a step and say, I find it quite interesting that both perspectives, I don't want to call them sides because that tends to set up an adversarial thing, both perspectives are saying the same thing is important, solidifying the boundaries, caring for the current tax-based taxpayers, and certainly protecting the children in a given area. I find it fascinating that we are actually saying we want the same thing. And in my world, I live in a bit of a world that I prayerfully hope is idealistic. And that means that in my world, in my head, and in my world, in my heart, we can discuss these items, and Peter and Paul can argue about the way to get there, but they're still trying to get to the same place. We're still trying to solidify the boundaries so nobody can grab anybody. We're still trying to hang on to the resources we have, because you can never have enough resources, so you hang on to what you got. So for me, in my house, that's just a phrase, has nothing to do with my wife and my children, for me, it comes down to this. Someone mentioned, and I'm sorry, I don't know if this is Peg or Meta, but spoke of doing due diligence. One of you spoke of due diligence. I absolutely pledge you that I have done and will continue to do due diligence. I have talked to people on both sides of the equator. And I value, I think we all do, but I'm just speaking for me, value trying to listen to people and say, this is a different perspective you need to hear. And I'll get out from behind the pulpit, and I'll just simply leave it in this fashion. Show me how to lock the borders down. But show me how you can get that done before you tell me to give up my insurance that the borders will not be raided. You understand what I'm saying? We're not talking about building the big wall. Sorry, I channeled Donald for a second there.
Huge.
Sorry, huge wall. Sorry, that's going to be silly. You show me how we can lock these borders legislatively, but show me that that can be done before you ask me to give up the fire insurance. That's really all I'm asking. So, amen. Wow, this is really getting good. So, thank you. This is just a discussion, and I guarantee you, we are having more discussions. I value the opinions brought forward tonight from my colleagues, certainly from Mr. Griffith, Dr. Kellogg as well. Final words? Are good? Okay.
Just a reminder that the door's not shut in terms of that time period. There are multiple players. So if something takes a twist, then it creates an opportunity or a burden, either one, we'll be back to talk about it some more. So at this point, that's where we're at.
Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you for all of your input. We move on to Agenda Item 8, Personnel Consent Agenda, and I believe Lori will be speaking to us about that tonight. I'm going to ask Lori, before you walk through this, if there are, I'm going to ask for a motion. Is that what you're waiting for? Yeah, I'm going to ask for that. I'm just going to ask if you, if there are no objections, we will likely take all of these together unless there is something that you want to pull out. Just wanted to make that note, okay? So at this time, yes, I'd like to ask for a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And Lori is ready and willing to sing us through the agenda.
Oh, I promise not to sing.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Velardo, members of the board. Tonight's consent agenda contains 10 sections involving 81 persons. Section 8.01 is the resignation of nine classified employees and one substitute. Section 8.02 is the resignation of 12 teachers. Section 8.03 is retirement of one teacher, and one of them is an amended effective date. 8.04 is change of assignment for one classified employee and two temporary changes of assignment. Section 8.05 is contractual status change for five classified employees. Section 8.06 is a leave of absence for one classified employee. Section 8.07 is leave of absence for 13 teachers. All but one of these are for the full 16, 17 school year. 8.08 is one-time payments for three teachers. 8.09 is employment of two classified employees and five substitutes. And 8.10 are supplemental contracts for 21 teachers and four outside supplementals.
Thank you, Lori. Any questions, concerns, anything that you all would like to share? And I do want to ask again, is there one that you would prefer to pull out and deal with separately? Okay, Mr. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. We move on to Policy Consent Agenda Item 9. 9.01 is a final reading, Policy 6144 Investments. These revisions reflect the current state of law and should be adopted to maintain accurate policies. We have been through these, these are final readings. Anyone to speak to these? Dr. Kellogg, as far as you know, tonight, since it's a final reading, perhaps not? Bart, yes?
The first one's mine. First of all, do you want?
You want to go ahead and explain the first one a little bit, and then I'll take a look at the second?
Motion is second, first, please.
Uh, no.
So moved.
Okay, is there a motion for 901?
Second.
Thank you. The first one, I missed.
Policy 6144 Investments, this is the one that basically reflects the new higher-bias code according to New Orleans. So this is one that my sister and I have looked over, and these are fine. We've sent this to...
Sorry about that. We sent this also to the Delaware County Bank, who does our investments, to make sure that they're following these same new guidelines, and these are fine.
Okay. Thank you. And same with these, let me take, we'll take a look at 9.02, unless you want to take them separately. Anybody want to separate them, take them separately? Mr. Griffith, though, since I did just a motion, it's okay for 01 and 02. Okay. Would you, or who would like to address 02?
Just really in 02, it's just some language changes. If you look at the revision that was given to you, mostly has to do with changing grounds and facilities to school premises in about 20 different places and some other expansions. So it's not a significant change to our current policy.
As I recall, it's all a language change, is it right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Questions, concerns? Mr. Griffith, please call the roll.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Agenda Item 10, Recommended Action Old Business. We have none. Agenda Item 11, Recommended Action New Business. Several policies we will look at tonight. Policy 2460.03, Independent Education Evaluations. Coming forward to share with us...
Gertie Glass coming to the podium.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Velardo, Dr. Kellogg, and members of the board. I am here tonight to recommend that the board approve new board policy 2460.03, Independent Educational Evaluations. The new policy is being recommended to clarify the conditions under which parents may obtain an independent educational evaluation at public expense, including the format and timing of the request, the qualifications of the examiner, the location of the examiner, the cost of the evaluation, the content of the evaluation, and the district consideration of the result of the evaluation. Based on the above, I am recommending that the board approve new board policy 2460.03 as proposed. Do you have any questions?
Any questions at this time? Thank you very much. Item 1102, Policy 4162, Drug and Alcohol Testing, CDL License Holders. Who will address that?
Good evening, Vice President Velardo, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg. Policy 4162, Drug and Alcohol Testing of CDL Drivers is being recommended to be revised with language that will allow our district to comply with current and future requirements set by the U.S. Department of Transportation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? Any questions at this time? Thank you very much. I'll just remind you, as we go through these, you perhaps know this, since these are new agenda items and new policy recommendations, so we do not vote on them tonight. Policy 5112, Entrance Requirements.
Good evening, Mr. Velardo, Dr. Kellogg, members of the board. I'm here tonight to recommend that the board adopt revised policy 5112, Entrance Requirements. The revisions are based on an amendment to House Bill 367. These revisions prohibit schools from denying admission to a protected student, such as a child in protective services, group home, foster care, or other crisis facility, solely because the child fails to present certain documentation. This documentation referred to may be a birth certificate or comparable document, such as a birth affidavit. Once enrolled, the child or his parent or guardian has 90 days to produce the required evidence. It's recommended the board approve revised policy 5112, Entrance Requirements.
Any questions, concerns, thoughts at this time? Yes.
Okay. I know this isn't about changing the age, but that's what I want to talk about, the entrance to kindergarten. So, a couple things here, and stick with me. First day of school next year, and I'm talking next year, 2016, 2017, Westerville kids come back August 18th, kindergarteners come back August 23rd. Correct? The kids that are attending kindergarten need to be five by September 30th.
Correct.
Correct? And then, apologize, they have to be five on or before September 30th, and then the end of the first quarter is October 18th. So really, a fourth way through the year, they may be four, four years of age. So that concerns me. I know there's data all over the place saying both ways, you know, of sending kids and not sending kids. Here's a couple other things that concern me. I'm not sure the curriculum we are asking some of these kids, and I know it's not, you know, it's been handed down by the state, is appropriate cognitively, socially, or emotionally for these kiddos. We have some kids that are four and a half, some kids that are six and a half in the same class. We have 26 kids in a kindergarten class, I just want everyone to know. I think that kindergarten continues to become increasingly academic for these kids. It is really that first grade curriculum that's been brought down. Most kids, and I know this from my background, their brains aren't even ready to start really reading until the age of six, to the age of six. And then the big thing that is making me say something is, we had two seasoned teachers last year that presented about all-day kindergarten that stood up at the podium, and we asked them what they felt about the start age, one from Whittier, one from Hawthorne, and they felt like it should be moved back to August. To me, these are our experts, our troops on the ground, and I think we need to listen to them. So I would ask, you know, I would like to talk about it with my colleagues, and I think that we should think about changing it. It made sense at one time, but we've moved back the start date when we start school. The curriculum has changed. I just, I'm worried about these kids. I want them serviced. I wish there's some way we could take those kiddos and put them in preschool so they're ready. But it worries me for those kids, for the other kids in the classroom, for our staff. And we know what happened at the all-day kindergarten. There's lots, lots of struggles. And when our teachers are telling us that, we need to listen. So, my two cents.
Thank you, Mrs. Davidson. It sounds like a good agenda item for us to discuss down the road. Any other questions, concerns? Sorry, yes?
Well, but if we're gonna change the policy, I think that it would be appropriate to change it now, if we're even thinking about that. You know, for, this is the first reading, but if we're thinking about making changes to this policy, we should make that change.
Are you making a motion, a proposal for this evening?
I want to hear what my colleagues think. But yes, I would like, I'd like to do that.
Let me give you kind of my quick feedback. I like the idea of allowing our, pardon the analogy, boots on the ground, our teachers to have a strong say in the ability, the ageability of kids coming into class, for them to come last year, that was just last year, right? To the podium.
Yes.
I'm talking about when they came. And for that, I like listening to that. It seems to me that that's a wide range to look at, four and a half, four, up to six, six age in the same grouping. That's what you're talking about, right?
That's part of it. That's one of the pieces.
And the concern that the higher academic push for kindergarten, we may have overlapped, we now have a higher academic push for kindergarteners, and yet we're allowing in the same, the younger ages.
Correct.
And there's a disconnect there.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Where would you look at changing this particular policy? Or have you dug down deeply into that, where you would want to change that?
At the start of school. I think that when school starts, they should be five. And there's ways around it. If someone is really ready, I mean, that's one of the caveats in there, that the board may admit younger children, younger child to kindergarten if the child satisfies the board early entrance criteria. I mean, there's, if the kids are ready, absolutely, come on, let's, you know, we'll take you. I'm not saying I want to hold anyone out.
That sentence of a child is eligible for entrance kindergarten if she or she attains the age of five on or before, and then when do we start? What's the date? On, would you...
It varies.
It does vary with, when our school starts.
Yes.
But right now, I mean, it...
In August.
Right.
Like a mid-August kind of date?
I think there's two legal start, is there two dates by law?
Yeah.
It's either September 30th or...
August 1st.
August 1st.
Yes, okay.
So those are the two start dates. The other side to that, on the issue of if you flip and give the other start dates or they're older coming in with opportunity for younger students to meet the criteria to coming in at a younger age, that's actually a higher bar to make. The flip is under current policy, and the parents still have the authority whether or not they send their child. So if you're viewing your child as not ready for kindergarten, and I think, well, let me just say it, so, yeah. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Barb, the kindergarten committee has been discussing this, the change in the start date part of this policy as it stands right now.
Yes.
Have they come up with a recommendation yet, or they still in discussion?
There is so much evidence on each side that there doesn't appear to be an easy answer based on data. So at this point, there is still no recommendation.
Does that include teachers on the committee?
Here's my thinking. I'm not weighing in on whether I necessarily think the age requirement should be moved, although I would want to see some evidence that the one month makes a difference. And you and I have talked about how to look for that evidence. My concern about dealing with it right now as part of this policy is I don't have the information from the teacher committee, I don't have the input, I don't have a good understanding of the ramifications, not just for us, but for families who we would be saying had to hold their child back another year. So I don't have that stuff in hand to make that kind of a decision yet on this. That said, I don't mind talking about it, I don't mind looking at it. I would suggest that we could go ahead with the revisions that are here, because they're predominantly about protected children. And what I don't want to do is hold off on that, because those are rolling needs. Those happen at any point in time as children enter into various, very stressful situations for them. I want to make sure that they can get into school the way they need to. I wouldn't want to take this on right now with an expectation of making the change for the coming year because of those family ramifications. That would be, that makes me hesitant. I don't mind talking about it, I don't mind bringing it back for an additional revision, but if we're talking about the age piece, I just don't, I am not ready to do that. I just don't have the information to make that decision right now.
A change that would be reflective of next year would be, we've handled our just task before and will do it, but it is, it is a bit of an uphill climb, because you're changing the registration process that we're in the middle of at this point with kindergarten, all-day kindergarten actually is, that part is done. So it'll change numbers, because you're changing when, the start date. So families that have enrolled for next year, if that's, if that's not the intent, then we have a longer timeline for a formal decision.
And I wasn't saying that, but I really, you know, we kind of scratched the surface, and I know it makes people uneasy a year ago, and then we haven't spoken about it again. So I would like to get something on the agenda, and I want to hear from the teachers, because the ones I'm talking to, they want the August 1st. So those are my thoughts.
I would be interested in finding out how many students would be affected based on this year's, or the new enrollment for next year. And then also, I'm also interested in getting more teacher input on this issue. I'd be interested in learning more about it.
Thank you.
Any other?
No.
Just too quick, because we do have a kindergarten update coming in June. Will that committee be able to present some thoughts to the board at that time about their... And the other piece is, is there parent involvement in that? Because I don't want to go down this path without parent involvement. I think this is a critical piece. We're determining a place of entry. And my only caution is, moving it back to August 1 makes the entry for younger people much more difficult than it does to leave it where it is, but to have that conversation with parents about whether or not they think their child's ready to come. It's harder to get in when you're young, and I know this from lived example with my own. She didn't get in, even though she was October 11th, and later on, I'm not bragging, but this is, she did skip a grade. And my wife still laments that, because there's no class picture from that year. My son, who's August 11th, who's a talented young man in many ways, was quite happy staying home the extra year. Now he's 20, I'm hoping that doesn't last, but...
Brains from your wife.
Yes. But so, to be assured, I know that this is a hot-button issue for Mrs. Davidson and many members of the board, and for our teaching population. And we've looked at it a couple different times, and we keep coming up to stalemate. And I don't know where the tiebreaker is going to come, but I'd like to give that committee a full and ample opportunity, because some of the changes that were described here, all-day kindergarten changes the complexion of the implementation of the curriculum that is much more rigorous, because you have more time to deliver the same curriculum and deal with the social-emotional dealings and what is it like to be at school. We did experience at Longfellow in particular, where we staffed those four classes with 26 kids, but we've changed that enrollment pattern for next year, and we're capping Longfellow classrooms at...
20.
20, because we knew that that was a problem in those spaces. So, and the other all-day kindergarten classrooms, we capped at...
26.
26. So, you know, we know that we experienced some of that, some curriculum changes, and I think this gives that committee ample time to understand and then bring forward recommendations built on where we're at as well. So we will continue to that mission and bring it forward, and then hopefully somewhere we can figure it out.
Thank you very much, Barb.
Thanks, Barbara.
Moving on, Policy 7310, Disposition of Surplus Property. I think you spoke very well last time, by the way.
I appreciate it. Well, good evening again, Mr. Velardo, members of the board. This is Policy 7310, Disposition of Surplus Property. The U.S. Department of Education released newly updated Education Department General Administrative Guidelines, formerly known as EDGAR. I learned that one. The policy is aligned to comply with federal guidelines. The regulations went into effect December of 2014. It just simplifies the language to follow as federal guidelines change. So it is my recommendation that the board approve the guidelines as provided, or the policy as provided to you.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns? Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, Recommendation Action, Recommended Action Standing Business, 1201, Donations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Would any of you like to speak to this?
Big thank yous.
So very grateful.
If Lori does sing, maybe she could sing thank yous.
Lori? Okay. We say it every time, because it's worthy every time. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. Griffith, please call the roll.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. 12.02, Resolution to Approve Admission and Waiver of Tuition for Foreign Exchange Students. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Anyone at all going to speak to this one?
Mr. Reeves went homesick today. So nothing specific, we've passed these before. As someone who's paying host parent right now to one of our foreign exchange students, it's the second time we've done as a family. It's great experience. And what's really neat is to listen to their stories about their experience here and the way Westerville embraces them, supports them, and they really come to appreciate the experience. So thank you to our community for reaching out to those young people and making them feel part of the Westerville experience. It's been really awesome.
Thank you so much. I love this kind of activity. Mr. Griffith, please call the roll.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. 12.03, Impracticality to Transport. I believe, Chris, you'll be sharing that.
Good evening, Mr. Velardo, members of the board. Before you, it's a resolution declaring the impracticality for transportation. The offices of Purchasing Logistics has evaluated these five private school students that you have in front of you per the requirements of the Ohio Revised Code, and has declared these students impractical to transport. Approving this resolution would allow the district to offer payment in lieu to transportation. The amount of payment in lieu is determined by the state, and tonight is our recommendation that the board approve this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. And before I ask if there are any questions, I neglected to ask for a motion, so may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns for Chris? Any need to keep him up here to ask lots of things? Thank you, Chris. Mr. Griffith, please call the roll.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Agenda Item 12.04, Out of, excuse me, Overnight Out-of-State Field Trip. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I really want to go.
A second. This is, anybody going to speak to this?
As I said, Ms. Reeves is out, so it looks like a fun trip. It's after school's out, five students.
Doesn't cost us anything.
Five students and a board vice president is the way I read it. I'm just saying. Okay, I asked for a motion already. Mr. Griffith, please call the roll.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Agenda Item 12.05, Resolution Authorizing Superintendent to Accept Resignations. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Would you share with us, please?
Good evening, Mr. Velardo, again, members of the board. I'm here to speak to you, not sing, about a resolution authorizing the superintendent to accept resignations on behalf of the board, pending board approval. Current practice is we confirm receipt pending board approval, which sometimes results in a 10 to 12-day gap for both the person who's resigning and our staff as well, who are ready to, or anxious usually, to get someone to fill those shoes. This would allow us that flexibility, and I'm here to recommend that you approve the resolution.
Thank you. Dr. Kellogg, would you be willing to share some thoughts behind this as well, since we've had a question about it?
It's a simple issue of timing, being able to acknowledge someone's... It's a simple issue of timing, being able to acknowledge someone's retirement and then move forward with, or preparing ourselves for the next hire. Nothing, nothing simpler. It's really just that. And it keeps us, keeps us moving in the process.
Still necessary of board approval?
This is, allows me to accept the resignation on behalf of the board. It will still come to the board.
That's what I meant.
But it does accept that and notes it.
Okay.
The failsafe is that it has to come to the board. And that is in there. This, to my knowledge, has nothing to do with any situation or any particular thing that's going on. We have run into it a number of times in the past, though, where, and usually in the summer, because you were talking about July, the board isn't in session. We need to get a vacancy posted. We can't get the vacancy posted. So we end up, you know, it kind of snowballs from there and it makes it difficult. And there have been times when we've lost out on candidates that we might have wanted. So doing this resolution, we have the ability to remove the resolution whenever we want, if we feel that you are abusing it. And we have the requirement to ratify any of those decisions or to reject those decisions. Now granted, if we rejected, it does create that snowball issue, but it's much less likely for that to happen than the other way around.
Correct. It's just to keep us moving forward, to fill positions in a timely fashion.
Thank you. And I just, I guess I would just say, I appreciate healthy skepticism as well, from my perspective, in my shoes. That's not the case with this particular resolution. I think I've already called for a resolution. And second, could we have called a roll, please?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. 12.06, resolution approving asbestos abatement work at Point View Elementary School. Mr. LaRose?
Thank you, members of the board. This is for abatement work necessary to complete the final phase of the Point View renovation project. The bulk of the work is in the media center and the cafe area. We received three bids ranging from $41,000 to $85,000. LEPI was the lowest bidder at $41,036, that being $11,000 under the engineer's estimate. LEPI completed the prior abatement work at Point View and we recommend accepting LEPI's bid for the last phase. That will start after the last day of classes.
Thank you. And I think I did not ask for a motion on this one, so before I ask for questions, second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns for Mr. LaRose? Mr. Griffith, please call the roll.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Resolution 12.07, resolution declaring urgent necessity for the building renovations at Point View. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Mr. LaRose?
Thank you again. In June of last year, the board approved a contract with the Altman Company for the building addition and renovation work at Point View Elementary. In February, the board approved terminating this contract if deemed necessary due to the contractors' failure to comply with the contract requirements. On April 5th, we terminated Altman's contract and asked if Altman's bonding company desired to complete the project, and that was after the architect certified termination for cause. Last Friday, the bonding company declined to take our, over the project. And as a result, we are requesting that the board waive the normal bidding process for a replacement contractor by declaring urgent necessity in an effort to maintain the schedule and have the renovation work completed prior to the start of school next year. We have negotiated a cost with 2K General Company, the second lowest bidder, in the amount of $1,636,000, and recommend board approval to declare urgent necessity and prove executing a contract with 2K General.
Questions? Thoughts? I appreciate your diligence in this area. I'm sorry we are in this particular area, but I know that, what do we call this, urgent necessity, in order to get something done so a bunch of kids can show up and be educated is somewhat of an urgent necessity. Mr. Griffith, please call the roll.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Item 13, 1301, public comments. We have several comments. Remind you of five minutes to address the board in public comments section of the agenda. Please remember to address the agenda item. These are free flowing, so you don't need to address the agenda item. Timer will be shown on the screen. Mr. Hershizer will call time when five minutes has elapsed. Please address your comments to the board and not to the audience. We have Bobby Beddinghouse.
Hello, I'm Bobby Beddinghouse. I'm a retired Westerville High School American Sign Language teacher. Informing the board and the administration regarding the need for skilled American Sign Language speakers is the reason I'm here. Historically, when the student demand for the beginning Spanish classes exceeds the number of teachers, more teachers are hired. When ASL numbers increase, the students and parents are told to try again next year. Fact, Sign Language interpreters is the eighth fastest growing career, according to the U.S. Bureau of Statistics and Labor. The field of interpreting will grow a whopping 30% through the year 2025. Most of this growth will take place through the video, the video relay modality. The largest video relay company in the U.S., Sorenson Communication, has their largest location over on Gemini Parkway. The second largest VRS company just opened a center in Delaware, or Dublin. Nationwide, Sorenson employs over 1,200 interpreters, with 110 interpreters housed at the Gemini Parkway Building. Of those 110, 10% are Westerville graduates. Starting pay is $20 to $25 an hour with an associate's degree. I earn well over $40 for the 12 years, $40 an hour for the 12 years that I've worked there part-time. I haven't included that we will also need more ASL and interpreter educators at the college level as well. American Sign Language still has a public relations problem. When Westerville School Board requires students take a foreign language to enter college, I can assure you, students enrolled in the American Sign Language classes will not only be learning a language that will challenge them academically, they will be gaining a skill which will be in huge demand far into the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jessie Day.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Jessie Day and I'm a teacher at Westerville Central. I know our goal is to make sure our students are college and career ready. Westerville has had many of its graduates go on to successfully complete the ASL interpreting program at Columbus State, and many have started working at Sorenson, as Bobby Beddinghouse said, and other interpreting agencies. I am one of those graduates. I'm an alumni of Westerville South, graduated in 2002. I actually started my ASL career when I was in eighth grade. Back then, you could take it as an eighth grader. Unfortunately, that has now only been allowed for Spanish. I took ASL all through my four years of high school. I graduated, went on to college. I've received multiple degrees and I'm a nationally certified ASL interpreter and a certified ASL teacher, all thanks to my beginnings here in the district. The ASL program here in Westerville has been around for almost 25 years. We are a well-established, well-respected model program. Kathy Shelton, the world languages consultant at ODE, regularly contacts and consults our teachers in the district to create ASL state standards due to our reputation. In fact, Dr. Leonard J. Davis, professor of English at State College of New York, cited our program in the Chronicle of Higher Education, which was published in June of 1998, as a model program that showed the need and the desire for such programs. Dr. Davis said, and I quote, "I spoke at a recent conference at the Ohio State University. In the audience, I noticed a large crowd of young people eagerly chatting in ASL. I assumed they were all deaf, but I found they were all students from the Westerville High Schools. Talking with them, I learned that although few intended to become interpreters, they believed that knowing Sign Language would help them in whatever jobs they intended to pursue. This just shows the power and the reputation of the ASL program in Westerville 20 years ago. The program has only gotten stronger and more widely respected. We have an amazing relationship with the ASL interpreting program at Columbus State. They send representatives to speak to my students each year. Our students who go on test out of their beginning ASL classes and essentially receive free college credit due to their skills gained here in Westerville. When I went to Columbus State, due to my placement test, I was awarded 20 free college credit hours. That is more than I received for all of my AP classes. Each year, we have many students that graduate and go on to ASL programs, not only at Columbus State, but Ohio State, Kent State, Bowling Green, University of Cincinnati, and the list goes on. Even after all of this, our district has been showing that the students, staff, and the community that we consider American Sign Language to be an inferior language, not worthy of the same respect of other world languages. That may hard, may be hard to believe and you may say, "Show me the data." Here it is. Every year, we cut multiple entire classes of students who wish to take ASL. Last year at Central alone, we turned away 70 kids from taking ASL 1. We turn down students from taking the language. We tell them, "No, we don't have the teachers." I combined my ASL 3 and 4 students together in overloaded classes. North was forced to cut all students who wanted to take ASL 4 this year. These were seniors who have taken three years of this language so far, seniors who are considering careers in the language and in the field, and seniors who were denied the ability to take the class by this district. Historically, Spanish has not cut students. And this year, with the increased student population coming to the high schools, the number for Spanish requests have increased. So naturally, the district is hiring more Spanish teachers, as it should be. However, the same logic has not been applied to ASL. For the past five-plus years, the number of students requesting ASL has increased and every year has exceeded our capacity. But instead of hiring more teachers as logic dictates, we have cut 100 to 200, 100 to 200 students every single year. And when administrators in each building have requested ASL FTE, they have been told no without further explanation. By refusing to acknowledge a growing job market, community, students wants and needs, the pleas of our administrators, we are saying no to ASL and showing that we feel it is inferior to spoken languages. The district is showing a great lack of respect to the ASL and deaf communities and preventing students' access into a growing and desired college and career path. I hope you will consider directing district administrators to increasing FTE for ASL to meet the needs of our students. Thank you for your time and I would love to have a conversation with anyone that has any questions.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Clegg.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Elizabeth Clegg and I graduated from Westerville Central, class of 2012. I went through the ASL program there and took ASL all four years of high school. My senior year, I was in honors ASL 3 and 4 and my teacher was Bobby Beddinghouse. And she said something to me that would change my career path. She asked me where I wanted to go to college and what I wanted to do. I told her that I didn't know. She suggested that I become an ASL interpreter and that I go to Columbus State. And that is what I did. And because I went through the ASL program with Westerville City Schools, I was able to, as Jessie was as well, test out of a lot of the classes at Columbus State and save money not having to take those classes. I was also way ahead of my cohort in my knowledge of ASL because I had had it all four years in high school with Westerville City Schools. I went on to make ASL interpreting my career. That's what I do full-time now. And ASL as a foreign language in high school is really the only foreign language where the students go on to make it their career. So please consider the ASL program with Westerville City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Chris Evenson? Evinson?
Evenson?
Evinson.
Thank you.
I had a 50% chance and I knew.
Yes, you did. Many people get it wrong, but that's okay. I miss do it. My name is Chris Evenson, members of the board and Superintendent Kellogg. I'm a graduate of Westerville High School. Ooh. And I actually taught at Westerville North from 1988 to 1999. In 19, in 1990, I had the opportunity to write the grant to establish ASL as a foreign language in Westerville. So I've seen the program begin and start and I feel like it's my baby. I currently am a professor and the coordinator of the interpreter education program at Columbus State. So that's why I'm here, to support the, the students, to support the faculty and to support this program, and to encourage you to consider keeping this program alive and vibrant. At Columbus State, we have a deaf study certificate, which is established to help people learn ASL, to learn the deaf culture, so that they can take that into any field that they go into, such as nursing or teaching, and communicate with people. And we also currently have an associate of applied science degree in interpreting. Currently, anywhere between 15 and 20, 15 and 20% of our student population is Columbia, is Westerville, are Westerville students. It's, every time I get a phone call from a Westerville student who wants to start our program, I'm thrilled because I'm sure you all know that starting a foreign language early is the best way to learn the language. And while I know that we supposedly can't have it in elementary school, which would be my dream, but, and we don't have it in middle school, which is sad, but when we get the students who've had it every day for four years and then we're ready to put them into an interpreting program, we know that they're going to have amazing, amazing language skills. I would like to share with you that I know that, I know that we talk about employment and how important employment is. And I, I really support that. But so many of the students aren't really even going to do it for employment purposes. So I have one story I'd like to share with you. When I was teaching at Westerville, we were doing a unit on deaf blindness and tactile signing, signing in a deaf person's hand. And because we have Columbus Colony here, right down the street, which is the only retirement and assisted living facility in the country for deaf and deaf-blind people. There are people there from all over the United States who live there. Some of our students were working at Kroger down on Sunbury Road, where they have a lot of deaf people who come in. One girl came to class one day after our, our talk about deaf blindness and interpreting for, and signing with deaf-blind people. And she said, "You'll never guess what happened." So a lot of times deaf people, when they find out that somebody can sign, will go to that line. They, they know that that student can sign, so they'll go to that line all the time. So Kelly, the student, was, was working at Kroger and the little deaf lady came through her line that she sees many times. And with her was a deaf-blind woman. And they were kind of signing in each other's hands. And since we had just learned how to sign money numbers and they were, we had learned about signing in people's hands, the student, Kelly, lifted her hands up to sign into the deaf-blind woman's hand how much it cost. The old woman started to cry. And Kelly was freaked out, like, "Oh my gosh, what have I done? What have I done?" And the deaf woman and the deaf-blind woman are signing into each other's hands. And the deaf woman turns to Kelly and says, "That's the first time anybody in her whole life has treated her as her, as a real customer," by herself communicating with her. You have an amazing program here. And I can't tell you how important it is, not only for people who want to make a career out of it, but make a difference in the world. And I really encourage you to not cut the classes and to keep this program alive and vibrant. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Judith Mayer?
I bet you can't guess what I'm going to talk about. Good evening. My name is Judith Mayer. And for the past nine years, I've taught ASL at Westerville Central. And I started out, just to give you a little history of my experience, I started out teaching one class. The program was just starting to grow. Bobby and I, actually, she was my mentor teacher and we had, I shouldn't tell you this, we had like 50 kids in a class because we taught together. Because I'd always taught English before, I'd never taught it. I knew the language, but I needed to learn and, or learn how to teach it. And so we had a blast. That was some crazy times. But anyways, over the next three years, she and I worked hard. We worked, we would talk to each other, sign to each other in the cafeteria. And the kids were like, "What are you saying? What are you saying?" And I tell you, the next year, I think I had four or five kids that were in that lunch shift who had watched us every day. So the interest just started to grow. And within three years, I became full-time at Central. And then 2011 hit. And Mr. Velardo, you'll probably remember that you are on this side of the podium, as I was, fighting for our kids Magnet Schools. And I was also begging the board, "Please don't take away our program. These kids love this, they love ASL. Please, please, please don't take it away." And I was very grateful. And I was very grateful because the board at that time, if you were there, and the superintendent decided to keep it, and we were very honored for that. Next couple of years, the program would grow a little bit, and we'd have a few kids over, and I'm like, "Oh, we have to cut people here and there." Never really justified hiring anybody else. But as Jessie spoke to, over the last five years, those numbers have like skyrocketed. Over 50 students, just at Central, that we have to cut, 60 students. There was one year that the Level IV kids weren't sure if they were going to be able to take it or not because there wasn't space. And even though we begged and begged, "Please, let us increase it. We have the ability. We can help you find teachers," we kept being told no. And it didn't, we could accept it because it was happening across the board. You know, it was happening over at North and South. I don't know their exact numbers, but it was happening with other curriculum areas, and we understood that. And didn't like it, but we understood it. And it's really hard. I am also a taxpayer. Actually, I have two houses, so I get double the money coming to this district. So I respect the fact that you guys want to be in control of the money. You know, Mr. Griffith, I know you work really hard to try to keep things balanced and whatnot, so I do understand that. But it's frustrating. I just, you know, it's very hard. The last year, last spring, one of the district administrators came to our school and said, "Hey, we need to know how many people you're going to cut because we're going to propose to the board that we increase FTE for several areas, including world languages." And I said, "Oh, sweet. Here, it's going to happen. It's going to happen." Read the board minutes. Yes, it got approved. I'm like, "Oh, they're going to, they're going to give us the FTE. We're going to finally grow this program." I was like psyched. And then I found out that it was just going to be AP Spanish. I'm like, "Ugh." Okay, well, AP Spanish, that's good for the state report card. I get that, even though we have a lot of kids that get college credits, as Jessie pointed out. And I was okay with it because that program had been cut before. So, "Okay, I don't need to go to the board with that. I'm fine." Now, so you're probably wondering why I'm here, if I, all these other things, I didn't come to you. I haven't been here for about three years, so it's been a good year, or a good year for years. But last Friday, I'm sitting there at lunch with, talking with my coworkers, and someone made the fact that, "Oh, well, they're increasing the Spanish FTE at this building." I'm like, and I knew the point two. I knew the one AP Spanish class. I'm like, "Okay, I'm good." And then I found out, "Oh, no, no, it's point eight." And so I made a beeline to my sister principal, and he's like, "I'm really sorry. We tried. We begged. All three assistant principals begged for this, and they won't give it to us." And here's where I'm at with that part. If everybody is cut across the board, or everybody is not allowed to grow, and I know that the emphasis is for middle school to get some of those classes back, I understand it, and I agree. They got hit the hardest with all the cuts. Shouldn't it be equal? Why, if world language is going to get FTE, why can't it be everybody gets FTE? French is growing at North and South. Why can't? We all get it. And I just, I know, I hate to say no to kids. I had a girl tell me today, she goes, "Yeah, it took me two years before I could get into your class." Ridiculous. In middle school, she wanted to be an interpreter, and she couldn't get to it. So I just, if you're going to give it to Spanish, I would like you to consider giving it to us as well. Thank you.[817.26][817.26](Applause).
Thank you very much, Judith.
Hello, good evening. I'm sure you know what I'm going to talk about as well. My name is Lori Peters, and I too am an ASL teacher in the district. My day consists of starting at North in the morning. I have two periods there, and then I travel to South to finish out my day. I've only been a teacher in the district for the past two years, and I have to say I love it. I love my students. I love my coworkers. I love the work that I'm doing. I'm a graduate of North, and when ASL had actually only been in the district for two years under Chris, who got it started. And so I had the privilege of taking the language 20-plus years ago, a language that changed my life and many others' lives. There's approximately 200 working sign language interpreters in the Columbus area, and about 20% of those interpreters have taken ASL through Westerville City Schools. That's a huge percentage. This percentage does not include people who are working in other fields with deafness that also took ASL in Westerville. The Westerville community is recognized across the nation for having a premier ASL program. Many of the residents in the community are deaf and moved here because of the advantages of the city being so deaf-friendly, just like my family recently did. One of the reasons we moved here is because of that little girl over there. That's Emily, and she's four, and both her and her dad are deaf. We moved to Westerville because Emily can take gymnastics class and her teacher signs. We can go to the grocery store, and people can sign with us. I can get young adults to babysit Emily, and they're able to communicate, and I don't have to worry as a parent that there's not communication happening in my home. So ASL really has a value, and it's shown here every day in our everyday lives in Westerville. This year, I started the ASL club at South, and it grew really quick. We had over 70 members. Thirty-five of those students are active and are volunteering weekly at the Columbus Colony Elderly Care on Sunbury Road in Westerville. It's a nursing home, like somebody else mentioned, for deaf patients. It's one of the only few like itself in the country. And my students play games, they help with meals, they do arts and crafts with the residents. So I'm not really only proud of my students for doing the selfless act, but also for continuing to help the Westerville deaf community thrive on the things that are needed. I too understand restrictions have to be made. I don't understand how, why we're restricting youth to take a language that is so valuable in this community where we live, work, and play, though. We find the value in the other languages and think there's importance, but I don't understand why we're capping the classes at ASL. We have so many students who want to take ASL, and we're denying them that. So I've just named a few things that we're doing really well, and if we could grow, think about all the other possibilities that we could do. As educators, we want to see our students succeed. I have story after story of those success stories. The Yale Center for Dyslexia and Creativity found research that students with dyslexia have trouble accessing individual sounds of spoken words, and 99% of dyslexic students struggle in their primary language, making it difficult for them to learn a second spoken language. All right? So the center found that these students often succeed in a visual language like ASL. Second language acquisition is difficult for anybody. But ASL being a visual language, we can help those students with learning disabilities. We can help those students who are visual language learners. Noam Chomsky, he theorized that the ability to use the language with native speakers is that the language will help the acquisition using it with native speakers. And here in Westerville, we're fortunate. We have native speakers that can use the language with our students. So please, take a look at the numbers of students that we cut yearly from the ASL program, reconsider the number of sections that are offered. If I or one of those 20% of Columbus interpreters would have been cut from ASL courses, I don't know where I would have ended up or where they would have ended up. We had the privilege of studying this amazing language, and I would like to give more students that privilege as well. Thank you.[1093.41][1093.41](Applause).
Thank you, Lori.
I'll have to say, pardon my addressing the people, the ASL people are as amazing as they're telling you. From my experiences at Columbus State, I have to say, the first time that I had an interpreter in my classroom, I was a little bit jealous because my students weren't looking at me. They were so fascinated with what was going on. And the intriguing one was, and I'll ask these people, would you sign Tornado for We learn so much from these people. Students would go to them and at least say, how do I say, "Please, thank you," very simple, polite gestures. So I certainly would encourage that we make some decisions here. That being said, in your discussion, you know I'm going to talk about win-win. In your discussion of win-win, the statement was made that the political will was there in 1986. Well, like it or not, there is a political will of sorts right now. Let's be honest about it. When we get the Columbus Dispatch, the Columbus School Board, and the Titans of Columbus wanting to explore, saying this is not 1986, we can't assume the ostrich position. I know it's nice to avoid confrontation, but there is a great possibility that it's going to hit us between the eyes. And it's more than protecting the given area, it's protecting the entire school district. So I hope that you go a little further in your discussion with all the entities.
Thank you, Peg. Agenda item 14.01, Board Comments. Who would like to share?
Thank you so much to our speakers. I truly, truly appreciate it. My daughter is currently taking ASL and absolutely loves it. You are all phenomenal teachers, I can tell, with your passion. Thank you for advocating for your children.
Decided to spare you my coughing. You know how it goes. Once you start coughing after you've had a bad cough, you can't stop. So I thought it'd be better if I went out there and did that. So thank you. I'm not sure what everybody else said, but ASL has been an extraordinarily important part of the district since Chris got it started. And my own daughter was in the program. She uses it a lot because middle schoolers think they can trick her when they use sign language.[1278.38][1278.38](Laughter). Yeah, but they can't trick her. I would be really interested, and John, I'm sorry if this has already been said, I apologize for that, I would very much like to have some information related to the concerns that were raised this evening. If you could take a look at that, talk with Scott Reeves about this, I'd like some additional info related to the ASL staffing, the history, the outlook on where that's going. I am concerned about the concerns that were raised, particularly as regards Spanish staffing versus ASL staffing. If you could get that information for us, I would very much appreciate knowing where we are with ASL in this district. I'd also be interested in some information from you about how our overall sections look as regards scheduling. Where are we over? Where are we in good shape? What's going on with those patterns of enrollment or desired enrollment in our courses?
You want that exclusively to ASL? Do you want that in terms of world languages?
That's kind of overall.
Or overall?
I would be interested in some information overall so that I can effectively understand the context of where we are with ASL as regards other overenrollments that we may have or we may not have. But I'm particularly interested in where we stand with our ASL staffing.
Will do. Thank you. Any comments, Dr. Kellogg, Mr. Griffith?
Just a clarification on the allocation of the additional world language FTE that were provided this year. The process for that was, we provided information to the secondary building principals and the department facilitators, once they were on board, regarding, here's the allocation. The discussion about how that was divvied up, whether or not it was this many sections of Spanish or French or whatever, was function of that discussion. So I understand that there are sections of many course offerings we offer that never make it to the board, meaning the scheduling board, because we don't have the full FTE covered. In fact, if you go back to the discussion we had two years ago about additional staffing, we went through the numbers of students who weren't accessing fine arts courses, world language courses, and music courses, which is what led to the decision to add staffing in those places, which led us to have those discussions. So I certainly understand when numbers of kids who want to access a course get left on the cutting room floor and the impact that has. So when we put that in the context of the big picture, there could be lots of places, science would be the other one, where kids aren't able to access courses they may want because we don't have the full FTE to support that. And I never liked that experience for kids or for teachers. But we certainly can go back in that context and take a look at where we are for this year and the impact our staffing decisions have. The other side of that is, it's not just in the teaching sections that we're getting requests for FTE, the pressure for FTE. Guidance counselors at the secondary level, where we're looking at enrollment numbers, whether or not it's additional administrative support, mental health, special education, which is always a growing population. So the pressure for FTE on the system is huge, and it's never fun to be in, I applied for this job, so I accept all the responsibility that comes with it, but it's never fun to sit there and talk with our building people about those kinds of numbers. So thank you to the leadership for the staff that's in there, for building the program, for building a program that's model, not every suburban district in central Ohio or in Ohio at all, which is why the Westerville kids are filling the coffers for those jobs because we have a robust program we want to keep alive. Thank you to previous boards and administration who made the decision not to put that on the cutting room floor because in a lot of places, that could have been easy for some people, not me, low-hanging fruit of what we want to put on place. And I understand the credibility factor in the ASL as a world language, as a second language for kids, that not everybody understands the robustness of it. And you did a great job tonight explaining both the economic and the moral ethical piece that comes in development of young people. So I'm glad we have it. I'm glad we have pressure to look at it and see if we can't push ourselves further to provide that. And I'll be really glad when our treasurer tells us to have millions of millions of extra dollars to fund everything we want to do. But that said, thank you for keeping the pressure on. It never hurts. And I'm always available. You don't need to spend all the time coming here. I'm always available to come talk about it. If you don't think you're getting the right answer, you know my email, you know my number, and you see me in the hallways, just grab me, and you know, we'll chat it out. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg. I'll tell you, the one thing I would add to this particular discussion is, and we need to wrap up here, I know, is I want to thank you for the passionate and respectful way you spoke about your topic. Sometimes people will speak with a lot of heat, and they think that's passion. But it is quite obvious that you are passionate about not only what you are teaching, what you're trying to do, but expanding the opportunities for the kids. So really, when people get up there, there's heat, and that's nice, but there's passion and respectful challenge to us. That's awesome. So yeah, I think we dig into the numbers and see what we can do. And really, and I appreciate several of you saying, "Listen, we get. It's a balance." But don't exclude us too quickly. Win-win, I've never suggested where, I am trying to protect only the boundaries of the area in question. I would not do that. I'd look at the whole school district as well. I appreciate your reminder on that, that it's really about the whole district, not just a couple of pockets. And I personally am not done looking and listening. And then we make our decision. And the final piece that I want to share is when Mr. Bird said that he was going to miss this meeting, he said it was a light agenda and would go very quickly.[1724.26][1724.26](Laughter). I'm going to look into the camera, Mr. Bird. I am so honored the way these meetings run, and I want to thank you to our interpreters here tonight. Thank you for being here and representing well, representing well. Last agenda item is 1501. A board will meet on Monday, May 9, Monday, May 23, where there will be a retirement recognition at the Early Learning Center right here in this building. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Griffith, please call a roll.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes, hallelujah. We are adjourned.[1779.88][1779.88](Applause).